I now call the Board of Education regular meetings order at 5:30 PM. In the absence of Board Secretary Rich Strun, it's recommended that Vice President Tominski be appointed to serve as Board Secretary pro tempore for this evening's board meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the agenda for Monday, September 23rd, 2024, Board of Education regular meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action?
A move to approve the agenda for Monday, September 23rd, 2024, the Board of Education regular meeting as set forth, and each item is considered ready for discussion and/or action.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll call vote.
Director Bochning.
Aye.
Director Byers.
Aye.
Director Newman.
Aye.
I signify with aye, and then President Garlock.
Aye. Have there been any requests to address the board this evening, Vice President Tominski?
There is, and there is one.
With one speaker this evening, you'll be given up to five minutes for your remarks. Please respect the time limit allotted to each speaker. Vice President Tominski will serve as your timer and indicate when your time has expired. If you've submitted a request to address the board and choose to refrain from speaking in the interest of equality and fairness, your time may not be yielded to another speaker. To abide by the open meetings law, there will be no dialogue between the Board of Directors and the public during this time, except to clarify the nature of questions or comments from the individual speaking. We ask that the audience and speakers refrain from using inappropriate language and outbursts as a matter of respect for all in the audience. This board has zero tolerance for profanity, vulgarity, demeaning language, or threats of any kind. Lastly, I'd like to remind our speaker that the board cannot address personnel and student matters. The board policy outlines a process for addressing and resolving concerns. We ask that speakers refrain from using personal names and information during public comment. Before we begin, I'd like to remind our speaker to state their name and address when called to the podium. Vice President Tominski, please call our first speaker.
Jana Linderman, speaking regarding enforcement of Senate File 496.
Thank you. This is my first time doing this, so let's see how it goes. My name is Jana Linderman. I live at 830 16th Street Southeast in Cedar Rapids. I'm the mother of two children, one is a three-year-old who just started preschool, and I'm also the mother of an eighth grader at McKinley Middle School. I guess the purpose of remarks is that I both have questions and concerns. I was aware of Senate File 496 existing, but it was brought to my attention at the beginning of the school year through a school district email that the school district here intends to start enforcing this law, and pulling books from shelves, and providing new guidance to teachers about what they are and are not allowed to say in the classroom. And some of the questions I have as a parent are, are we allowed to know what those books are that are being removed from our children's schools? Are we allowed to see a list of those books? What is the process? What is the recourse that parents have? And I guess secondarily, I'm here speaking because I felt like there isn't, hasn't been another venue for me as a parent to express my concern with how this is being implemented, that it's being implemented in this kind of abrupt opaque fashion, and what I can do as a parent and a community member to protect the rights of my child that's enrolled in school here, and also to show that we support and respect our teachers. Because this bill and its implementation is just another thing on top of years of challenges that our teachers have had, and I just feel powerless as a community member to do anything about it. I want them to know that we support them, that we have their backs. I want us to actually have their backs. I was told, I think, at the PTA meeting to talk to my legislator. My legislators didn't vote for this. None of the Cedar Rapids legislators vote for this. And I've led enough lobby days in Des Moines to know that the legislators who wrote this bill and enacted it don't care what I think, wouldn't listen to me if I came there for the purpose of disagreeing with them, because I've tried to do that before, and it's gotten really bad in recent years. So I feel like I've used every outlet that I have to express my opinions on this, but I want to know is, what are we doing as a community? Because what I see us doing is getting ready to implement this poorly-written, really vague law. It's not clear if that's possible to do in a faithful way, because it's not a well-constructed bill with conflicting requirements that aren't clear. Teachers aren't going to have a lot of room to know if they're following it, if they're actually following it or not. I'm afraid they're going to start censoring themselves, and that is the example that our kids are going to see from them. I would also say that I just have questions as somebody who went through the public school system. I was a sixth grader when I got my period in school. I also had a friend that year who was being abused by her father and reported it to her teacher. And I want to know how educators are supposed to talk to the kids that we place in their care five days a week, seven hours a day, when these kinds of issues come up. Do they run afoul of the requirements of this law or not? And my concern is, is that the legislators who wrote this aren't the ones taking responsibility where the rubber meets the road when our teachers have to start following these rules and maybe facing punishment if they don't get them exactly correct. Why are we the ones, as a community, as a school district, putting ourselves on the front line enforcing a law that doesn't appear to be constitutional? Because the United States Constitution is also the law, and it also applies here. People still have First Amendment rights. People still have due process rights. Our teachers and our students have federally protected civil rights that are all potentially being violated here. So we're not really following the law, and I question whether that's even possible. If we're trying to implement this one state legislature, what other laws are we going to be violating? And finally, I guess, one of my concerns from the school district email, and you see it on the screen here, that one of the primary objectives of this school district when we're designing curriculum for our students is to ensure that our students are future-ready. And my question is, when we're doing this, what future are we envisioning for them? Kids face so many obstacles entering the adult world, and we can't always take those away for them, even if we want to as parents. But we're teaching them to silence themselves, to cage their ideas, and I feel like that's indefensible as adults that are responsible for their well-being. And I guess I would like some more information and guidance, and I'm hoping the school district can think of a way to engage parents like me who are concerned and want to stand up for the rights of our children and want to show that we support our teachers. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you. I will now give the meeting over to Dr. Grover to share her superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Garlock. First, I'd like to express my gratitude to our community for renewing our physical plant and equipment levy. As we know, with 72% of voters supporting the renewal, we're now able to secure critical funding for ongoing maintenance and improvement of our district facilities. This was a reaffirmation of our community's commitment to public education and the future of Cedar Rapids. We definitely want to be able to give a special thank you to all of our community members, our parents, our staff members who were out sharing the relevant information so that our voters could make a very informed decision. So on behalf of the 15,000 students that we have in our school district, almost 3,000 employees, and in the support of 32 attendance centers, we definitely say thank you to our community for keeping the tradition going and helping to ensure that we will have PEPL funding for the next 10 years. As we think about the support that we have received from our community, we are just as grateful for the feedback that our community continues to provide to us, both formal and informal feedback, specifically as we think about the survey that was completed back in the spring with almost 10,000 responses. It aided us in the way that we approach the PEPL renewal this fall. And as we move forward and shift our attention now focused on the BON for BON 2025, I just want to let you know that our District Facilities Task Force Committee, they held their second meeting this last week. The committee consists of community members, parents, and district staff. During the meeting, we discussed the funding sources available for our district facilities. Participants had the opportunity to identify and discuss important values and priorities for the district, which this is going to be important. I think a lot of the discussion centered around, there's a lot of information to consider as we make decisions. There's also limitations when it comes to funding, and just we really kind of looked at how we compare to other surrounding districts and how they are making improvements within their districts, some of the funding mechanisms that are being utilized. I mean, I think it was a great experience. We even had an activity where the members, they had the opportunity to kind of help us decide how would they spend the money. It was quite challenging. I think Chad said, this is what I have to do every single day. So I think we definitely had a little bit of empathy for him as we moved forward. But definitely appreciation for these committee members. They are spending quite a bit of their time with us each month, helping us to think through this process. I think we do have some renewed energy with this team. One of the things that they asked us for was to make sure that we have transparency of what's happening at the committee meetings with our community. So I do want to thank our team. They were able to develop a location here on our website. You can see we have BON 2025, the task force work. So the minutes from those particular meetings, even if you're a community member, you're not a part of the task force, you can still engage with us. There's also a link there if you have questions for us. You can submit questions, and our team will answer, and we will continue to update this site as we progress through the progress, I mean, through the process. Our next meeting is scheduled for October the 8th. I would also like to next thank Lynch Ford of Mount Vernon for their generous toolbox donation to the Jefferson High School automotive classes. You can look at the pictures there. You can see that they were quite excited. Our autotech instructor, Jim Schubert, he definitely was very grateful, and we know that he will utilize this new toolset with our students. This is a great example of a community partnership that is helping our students to become equipped, empowered, and engaged in their college and career journeys. Speaking of engagement, so later here tonight on the agenda, the board, you will have the opportunity to support and effort here as we continue our college and career readiness work. But I did want to take an opportunity maybe to just speak on it just a little bit. On the agenda tonight, you will have an agreement with Emblaze, which is part of the Big Picture Learning Network. Some of you may have heard about it before. It's nationally known. This program will help manage student internship opportunities for the upcoming school year. Students will verify their attendance, reflect on their learning, get feedback from their intern mentor, and build their network on a secure online platform that has been tested across the country in schools like City View. So City View is where we're starting with this initiative. That's been a huge focus as we continue to think about the focus of City View. The interns will be a big, I guess, a signature piece of what it means to attend school at City View. This also aligns with our strategic plan of graduating college and career-ready students. City View's internship program is launching in the coming weeks. Students are getting prepared with resumes, personal statements, and practicing their interviewing skills. Local businesses and organizations are also being onboarded in order to host our students. So what this looks like is 11th graders will begin internships during their second quarter with the ninth and 10th graders, which we know we have. The ninth and 10th graders will start during their third quarter. These internships will be two to three days a week and based on students' college and career interest areas. So really exciting time to get this program started with your approval here tonight at City View. Next up, I wanted to share two important updates with the board surrounding safety and security within our school district. It's always an opportunity as we continue to think about safety in our schools to make sure that we have a renewed focus that information is constantly out with our campuses and our families. So Janessa Carr, our Safe and Secure Learning Environment Administrator, has been working hard to update our district's safety and security plans. Going forward, we will be using the terms hold, secure, and lockdown. Hold is used when we need to keep hallways clear due to an issue inside the building that is not related to an immediate threat such as a medical situation. Secure is used when there is a potential threat outside the school building, such as a police activity within the surrounding neighborhood. And lockdown is used when there is an immediate threat inside or near the school that could cause harm to students and staff. This information has been shared out with families through video and written communication. In addition, Janessa and our Cedar Rapids Police Department pals and our school resource officers will be providing training for all grades on the run, hide, and fight procedures. The training is being taught in age-appropriate ways. Thank you to the Board of Education last year for allowing us to adopt the Crisis GO. So I just wanted to give you an update in regards to where we are with Crisis GO. The district is working to roll out the Crisis GO system. You can see the timeline there. All staff, they were to download the Crisis GO app on August the 20th. I think we are on schedule. Information to all of the parents is set to go out this Friday. So we're asking all our parents to be on the lookout for more information in regards to how to download the app. Again, thank you to the Board of Education for your continued attention and support on helping us to create a comprehensive, safe, and secure learning environment framework for our students. Also wanted to give a quick update on Hazel Health Services that we announced last month. We're finishing up the training with our staff and with our Professional Learning Day coming up on September the 30th. Once that is complete, we will have the full launch of the program and continue taking student appointments for telehealth mental services. For our community, our district's Hazel Health website is now live, and you can access it via the district website and the school sites. This is where parents and guardians can request services for their students. This is another great tool for us as we continue to bring barriers down, as we focus on achievement going up. This is not a replacement for any other mental health services that we have, such as Tannerger. We still have a very robust relationship with them, but this is in addition to, and it is definitely focused on providing those virtual opportunities with flexible schedules for our students. All right, just a reminder, always a good time for celebrations. Just earlier this month, we held the official ribbon cutting and community open house for our newest elementary school of Trailside. So thank you to the Economic Alliance for coming out to help us with this, along with our community and our staff members. This building is certainly, certainly a shining example of our future-ready facilities plan, and certainly it will give us another way to think about the rest of our buildings as we move forward. So congratulations to all those folks over there at Trailside. And finally, let's talk about homecoming. So Jefferson High School held their homecoming last week. Our very own school board president had the opportunity to help celebrate, and I think the board is helping us out this year. We have board representation at all of our homecomings going forward. So congratulations to the homecoming court and the football team for winning their game. That makes it extra special. So just be on the lookout. This week, we have Kennedy. Their parade is on September 25th. Their football game is on September 26th. Next week, we'll have Washington. I guess they have a barn, a parade, and a bonfire, okay? That's on October the 2nd with their football game being on October the 4th. Always a great time to celebrate our students here in Cedar Rapids Community School District. Thank you, and that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Grover. Do we have any other board reports tonight? Director Bochning.
Thank you. Last Thursday, during a public meeting of the Iowa Association of School Boards, during a legislative update, it was noted that a bill regarding banning cellphone usage in schools will be proposed by State Representative Pat Grassley. It is assumed that to be in line with the required state attendance policy, private and voucher-supported schools will be exempt from this requirement.
Thank you.
I've got one as well. Finance and Facilities meeting, we had a meeting on the 3rd of September. Again, this was prior to PEPL, so we were really focused on the strategy to connect with the voters leading up to, and, you know, just wanted to reiterate and express our sincere gratitude for all of those who, all 72% of voters who voted yes. There are lots of ongoing needs with these facilities, so it is pretty vital, this type of maintenance. So appreciate you trusting in us. In regards to Hoover and Van Buren, we reviewed the interview process for an architect. There were interviews that were actually held on Wednesday, the 11th, and there were five firms that were interviewed. The interview committee was pretty robust. There were teachers, community members, parents, and a couple of us board members. So thank you to Director Tominski. We got to be a part of that process, and I had a real pleasure spending the day with this group of people. There was a lot of perspectives in the mix, really well-rounded conversations, so we felt really good about that day. And then there was some discussion around different models for design and building of these projects. So there's the design, bid, build, construction manager, and construction manager at risk. We decided to move forward with the construction manager at risk model. So we also kind of reviewed the timeline for the selection of this firm, and yeah, it was a great meeting had by all.
Thank you. Vice President Tominski.
I think I would just double-click on that, the ability to sit in that committee, because, you know, the leadership for those two buildings were also there. So it's a group of about 10 folks, and I think it was pretty well-represented. So hearing from folks that spend their time inside those buildings and know about the challenges in those communities and what those facilities actually need for those families and for those neighborhoods, I think was good. So look forward to seeing the next step on that.
And just thank you to those involved in selecting that group, so I know Chad and Carla and others were involved in that. So yeah, thanks, Dave.
Quick board report from the Policy and Compliance Oversight Committee. We met on August 27th, considered following provisions from School Board's Manual of Policies, Regulations, and Procedures. So we looked at Regulation 607.2, which is in regard to public performance by students, as well as Policy 610, which is a wellness policy, which includes reference to Regulation 610.1 and Procedures 610.1A and 610.1B. The next committee meeting is scheduled for Thursday, September 26th, from 4 to 5. The agenda is published and simply accessible through the district's website. You may get to simply by going first to the page on the website of the Board of Education, then scroll down to a horizontal band, blue or green, that says Board Members. I think that's actually available to the public as well, right? So if you're on the district website, just look for that. The committee's review process includes ongoing consideration of state and federal law and rules, model provisions of the Iowa Association of School Boards, and practical implications. After reviewing provisions, staff members from the committee present to the superintendent with recommendations of the board members on the committee. Superintendent then makes recommendation to the board as a whole. So that's just an update from our committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a couple updates myself. On Saturday, September 14th, I had the privilege to attend an ISCEa Legal Issues Conference. There were a couple general sessions and then several breakout sessions. One of the general sessions, excuse me, was led by State Auditor Rob Sand. He spoke about education savings accounts. His main point in his presentation was that the only legislative requirement in that law is that the private schools do not give the money back to parents. Beyond that, there are no restrictions on that money, and the private schools may use that money for any purpose that they deem appropriate. So there seems to be very little oversight or very little accountability for those private schools. The other session, general session, had to do with Senate File 496, which is the book banning legislation. There was a panel consisting of teachers, attorneys, discussing the lifting of the injunction of Senate File 496 that happened on August 9th, which then precipitated the enforcement of that legislation. They had a really interesting discussion about what happens next. ISCEa, ACLU, Penguin Random House, which is a publishing company, are all involved in a continuing lawsuit. While the injunction was overturned, there was a part of that decision that was perhaps more encouraging. The decision also rejected the claim that this, by the state, that book banning is a form of protected government speech. The judge did rule, had a ruling on that portion of it, which gives some encouragement to additional, taking it to an additional court. So that was an interesting day. The other thing that I want to report on, UEN, the Urban Education Network Steering Committee, met last week. They're working on legislative priorities for this year. We'll get more information about that at our annual dinner on November 20th. So please, if you haven't made Ryan or Lori aware of that, that you'd like to go, please do that. Prelimarily, the top four priorities are school funding, mental health, preschool, student opportunity equity. There is a work group that will continue to work on those and flesh out some more specific asks in each of those categories. But we'll learn more about that at our UEN meeting on November 20th. And that's my board report. So moving on to our consent agenda, are there any items a director would like to pull for comment, question, or separate vote?
If I may, just to comment on Item 8 and Item 15.
Of course. Go for it.
So on Item 8 is the agreement between the school district and the GATT architects. That's the architect that's been selected for the Harrison Project. When I was looking at the agenda, I just wanted to point out to the community, I think When I was looking at the agenda, I just wanted to point out to the community, I think this was usually, it seems sometimes when we see amended agreements, sometimes those costs go up, and this is actually a case where the cost is going down. So, the district was able to actually negotiate our rate with the GAT, down from 5.75% to 5.5%, which, if you know the way the design contracts work, that's a percentage on the size of that project. So, that is a pretty significant amount for this district. So, I know that one of the areas we're concerned with Harrison is the cost of that project. So, anything we can do to look at reducing that cost, I think is a great thing. So, just wanted to point that out to the community that the district is looking at ways at saving some money. And then the other item was 15, and then 15, if I can find it real quick. This is the purchasing register. So, this is an RFP that's going out for employee health and related benefits consulting services. So, when I was looking at this, the RFP would go out tomorrow, and then like a second notice would go out on October 1st, and then the due date for that RFP would be on October 8th. This is an item that actually came up during our Finance and Facilities Committee meeting several months ago. We were hearing from at least one employee group that the amount of raise that the district is able to give, because we're consistently getting low amounts from the state, that money is completely eaten up when we look at insurance premiums. So, in some cases, the insurance premium increase takes that entire raise away from those employee groups. We've been a member of a consortium. Carla, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think since the 90s, it's been quite a long time. I think that consortium has maybe run its course for a district the size of Cedar Rapids, so looking at some alternatives and ways that we can provide still high-quality insurance to all of our employees, but hopefully reduce the cost for the district and then obviously for employees. So, just commend the district for looking at creative ways to try to do what's in the best interest of our entire staff. So, thanks for the work on that. We'll look forward to the results of that RFP here in the next week or so. And that was all the comments that I had, so.
Thank you. It's always good to call out those times when we are, when the team is trying to save the district and the taxpayers' money, so appreciate that. Other comments, questions? Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote due to the personnel report.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye, and President Garlock.
Aye. We have four items under administration tonight. The first is the resolution fixing the date of sale of approximately $14,995,000 school infrastructure sales services and use tax revenue bonds, Series 2024, approving electronic bidding procedures, and approving official statement, and taking additional action thereon. Are there any questions for Carla? I do have a question, Carla. Could you tell us the exact date for the sale and the award of the bond?
The date of the sale is, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
The actual date of the sale is October 8th, and then the board will approve at their October 14th meeting.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Do we have a motion for the resolution?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Byers?
Aye.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye, and President Garlock.
Aye. The second item is also a resolution, authorize and set parameters for the sale of school infrastructure sales service and use tax revenue bonds, and to approve the official statement. Do we have any motion, any questions for Carla on this item? Do we have a motion for this resolution?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
This is a roll-call vote.
Director Borcheting?
Aye.
Director Newman?
Aye.
Director Byers?
Aye.
I'll signify with aye, and President Garlock.
Aye. Next is the request, School Budget Review Committee, Special Education Negative Balance for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Does anyone have any questions for Carla or Karine?
I do not have a question, but I do have a comment, and it's the same comment I make every year about Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act. So, with creation of the bill, there was a 40% promised funding rate. We've only ever been funded between 10% and 14%. Along with the majority of districts in the state of Iowa, we run an annual deficit for special education in the line of anywhere from $8 to $14 million annually for CRCSD. Varies by, the amounts are different for other districts. But again, this goes back to an underfunded initiative.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Lastly, we have a presentation from Adam McDonald, the District Activities Director, around the digital activities entrance procedure at athletic events.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Again, my name is Adam McDonald. I'm the District Activities Director. With me, joining in the crowd, is Chris Dean, CMAA as the Activities Director at Jefferson High School, and Grant Schultz, CMAA Activities Director at Washington High School. Just kind of a quick overview of where we're currently at with our activities numbers, if you could advance the slide. Across our three high schools, we have over 2,400 student athletes currently involved in our activities this year. This equates to 192 separate athletic teams in those grades. Similarly, across the three high schools for our fine arts students, this equates to 1,500-plus students involved in our fine arts, over 45 different performing arts groups. We also have over 45 different visual arts opportunities for our kids, so tremendous amount of opportunities and things that our kids are involved in. We are currently working on tabulating our middle school numbers to check on their procedures and their numbers as we have updated or changed their registration process. Another brief overview of just the current way that we manage our activities, we currently utilize the platform of Bound. This is our activities management platform for all of our areas related to extracurricular and co-curricular management. It's called the Let's Go Bound partnership. So, this includes things such as scheduling, event entry, activities registration, facilities management, team rosters, ticketing, which would be the point of discussion for this meeting, state reporting and compliance, among many other things. We also are working on utilizing not this platform, not only for the high schools, but also for our middle schools moving forward. As part of that agenda, was looking at moving to a fully digital or cashless ticketing system for all Cedar Rapids Community School District athletic events, not only for the remainder of this year, but for all activities moving forward. Part of the reasoning behind that is going to bring consistency across the Mississippi Valley Conference, as well as the Iowa High School Athletic, Iowa High School Athletic Association, and the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union. By moving to this plan, it helps to reduce our lines in our event procedures, our entry procedures, provide an overall safer environment without large amounts of cash being handled in a less secure environment, in an area in which is very susceptible to potential conflict. So, specifically, what does that mean? It means we are looking to be utilizing the already existing Bound platform and agreement that we have with Bound. We just simply shift from, shift to a fully digital event procedure at all of our athletic events. So, this includes individuals buying tickets or activities passes online ahead of time on the receptive school website, scanning available QR codes at entry points the day of the event or prior to the event via social media, using Apple or Google Pay methods at our events, or utilizing a valid credit or debit card at the POS system at those events. So, we have been piloting at our high schools, this cashless system for the last month, and by we speak with our guys, gone extremely well, very positive results. I don't know if Chris or Grant, if you have anything additional you would like to add to those comments. So, essentially, how the system works is designed to be user-friendly with all the activities conveniently purchased online through this app and through these high school website. By utilizing the mobile app that comes with it, the ticket is securely located within that app, or it can be printed off from online. It gets stored on your smartphone, printed for convenience. We can do that either at home, you can do that at a school, or at any point where you need the services. Card readers provide touchless pay and credit card payments, just again, streamlining that process and making everything very smooth and convenient. While we feel this is an important move for us, a lot of it centers around safety, so enhanced safety of our activities entry points, particularly for our volunteer ticket takers, many of which are our staff, so we want to make sure that they feel secure and safe as we are working through those procedures. Enhanced money management procedures to making sure we are following the appropriate board policy, as well as maintaining safety of those. Data collection opportunities, overall cost savings, conference, and state alignment, spectators' overall convenience, and environmentally friendly. The document that I provided to you as well, this kind of gives a broader list of more additional details, if you have other reasons to why we have kind of, we're pursuing or would like to pursue this opportunity for our activities. So, when we're looking to implement this, this is looking to be implemented immediately for the remainder of this fall season and beyond. For a district, we have already been utilizing the district passes for three to four years. We have been utilizing digital ticketing through this platform for the last couple of years. This would just be a shift more towards, fully towards those digital platforms. Bound is a platform that is required by the Boys Association and the Girls Union for our member schools, for stat entry and data entry, as well as for ticketing for all girls' Athletic Union events. We plan to communicate this with multifaceted approach to communication, a lot of written communication from the district newsletter, building-specific emails, social media posts, and an FAQ that has been developed. Visual communication with posted signage at event points, entry points, social media postings, willing to put stories in the Gazette and have conversations with KCRG about getting that information communicated. Verbal communication has been taking place at all of our high schools, as well as our shared events at Kingston Stadium. As spectators come in, we are preparing them just through conversation about the potential of moving to this outlet. Again, we have been piloting that for the last few weeks at our high schools to a lot of success. Just what you'll see in front of you there is just some sample signage. On the left here would be a sample digital media or social media post that can go out, and on the right would be with some of our visual signage that would be posted at our stadiums and facilities, just to help with this communication to our families. The number one thing we want to make sure that we are working towards is the support of the community through this change, and making sure that they are, with any change, there always comes challenges, so we are committed to making sure we're working with each of those individual groups to support them as needed. All of our gate workers have been trained and will continue to be trained on assisting individuals with the walk-up process and going through that. Our building administrators are available at each of our events, as well as beyond at their buildings, and are trained to support individuals in this process. Individuals without credit cards or debit cards can work with each specific building, or myself here at the ELSC, to work through purchasing procedures for passes. That will save them both time and money at the gate. We have cost-saving opportunities for our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, as well as other low SES factors, so we have those procedures in place to support those individuals as well. And our high schools are resident experts in supporting those and their bookkeepers. What you'll see here also, I provided, is a how-to guide on what can be shared. I don't know if we can pull that up. Also provided to you at the board. All of these can be customized to the individuals to each specific school, and written, I have them written in four different languages that are our major languages right now across the district, but just provides visual representation that we can share with individuals to help work them through this process. Some additional support that comes from moving to this is working directly with Bound. Bound themselves provides a FAQ on their website with how to work through this process and understand this process, and they are very receptive to challenges and communications that pop up on the daily, including if refunds are available or needed. So, we can work really well with those individuals to make sure that they are supported. So, as we look to make, move forward with this change, we're just asking for your continued support as we hopefully change our entry procedures to a more secure, more safe, but more user-friendly environment going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Do we have questions?
I do. Thank you for your presentation, first of all. Am I understanding correctly, we have no cash option at the gates?
Currently, we do. At our shared facility of Kingston Stadium, we are still utilizing the cash option. The goal would be to move to a completely digital format.
Well, I just want to thank you for keeping an eye towards equity and making sure that there are some options for people that may not have a credit card or a smartphone or cellphone to be able to make that purchase, so that there's that opportunity in person with cash before the game, and also to keep an eye on equity with making sure that we're communicating in our dominant language that's spoken within our district. I do have a question about, like, is there a, like, a senior citizen fee, or has that been looked at? I know that there's some other schools surrounding us that offer that discount.
Currently, we tend to direct them to our pass options. We don't have a specific senior citizen reduced rate, but we direct them to our pass options. We can actually give a pretty significant savings of almost up to 50%, depending on the passes that they buy. But we've had discussions, and we'll continue to have discussions, on a senior citizen pass for our local schools.
Okay, thank you.
I have a related question to that. As a benefit to district employees when they retire, there used to be a free lifetime pass to all activities. So, if we have a retired staff member that has one of those passes, do they just show it and walk in, or?
Correct. Yep, that is still valid.
That hasn't changed.
That doesn't change.
Okay.
And it would be the same for our Mississippi Valley lifetime passes for a coach, just a printed card for a coach that's been a part of the conference for a very long time. They just show at the gate and can enter.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
If I can, just one. Is there a cost to the system?
By utilizing and going the Let's Go Bound plan for the school itself, it is a no-cost initiative. Now, if we were to not go with that plan, then there can be a significant cost related to each aspect that we have to purchase and utilize for our management.
Okay, thank you.
And mine just goes back to that inclusivity piece, because it was noted that everyone, pretty much everyone has a phone all the time. People, it'd be nice if people maybe didn't once in a while bring a phone, but I also just want to note that, you know, that is a reality, right? Someone will show up without maybe a credit card option or a phone. Is there any sort of, like, learning curve timeline associated with that, that, you know, if they had cash, they could electronically purchase it at the gate in the time being, or someone could assist them with that, or is it just a couple emails go out? You know, I'm just trying to understand the timeline, so when we...
Right, and we've, so we've been utilizing these passes. Any of our postseason events for the last four or five years have been totally cashless. That's a requirement from the state, so we've been utilizing that. So, that helps with the transition, but we'll be out there. Our event staff, particularly for our joint stadium of Kingston, SFG, is trained and has been out there working with those individuals to scan and go through that process. So, yes, there'll be a lot of training and communication that goes along with that, and that's where an individual maybe has a challenge, we would encourage them to come off to the side, and we'll work with them individually. At no point in time will we ever deny an individual entry into the game or into an event. We will make sure that they are in, supported however we need to do that.
That was probably the question I should have asked. Great, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Adam, very much. That concludes the administration portion of the board meeting. We have one more section, Board Governance. We have two items in this section tonight. Our first is the annual appointment of the 2024 IASB Delegate Assembly. It's recommended that Director David Tominski be the delegate and Director Caitlin Byers be the alternate for the 2024-2025 IASB Delegate Assembly. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Our final item for the evening is a discussion from board members on the recent Consortium of State School Board Association Conference that was attended in Washington, DC. There were four of us who were able to attend that conference two weeks ago. It was a two-day conference. Jennifer, Director Borcheting was there, Director Roundtree, and Director Humbles all attended the conference. It was a two-day conference. On the first day, they brought in speakers, different areas of federal advocacy. We really heard some really interesting presentations that day. The chairman of the FCC was there to talk about E-Rates and how that impacts public schools. The deputy secretary from the Department of Ed was there and talked to us about their focus on mental health. focus on mental health and safe and secure learning environments. And one that I found particularly interesting was a demographer who spoke to us in detail with a lot of data and charts about population trends in the United States, and basically in a nutshell, people are moving south. And it's going to create-
They know it's going to get hotter down there?
I guess they're hardy. It's going to, it's going to create some workforce situations throughout the rest of the country. He also talked about something that I could relate to, the Silver Tsunami, the number of retired people, retired-aged people who remain in the workforce for one reason or another. But as we look at college and career readiness, I think this, again, plays a factor. We want our kids to stay here, so we need to prepare them for the job market here. We don't want them all to move to the south. We would like them here. So that was day one, day two. We had arranged meetings with our federal representatives, Congresswoman Hinson, Senator Grassley, and Senator Ernst, and we spent the second day in conversations with them or with their staff. When we went to DC, we took with us a very nice little trifold of legislative priorities for the Cedar Rapids District. There were basically three federal issues that we were focused on. One of them was mental health funding. We've talked a lot up here about the need for more mental health resources, and the costs associated with that. The second priority that we spoke with them about was IDEA funding, which Director Borcheting just refreshed our memory. We continue to run a deficit on that. And then the third priority that we spoke extensively about was funding for child nutrition. It is a continual conversation, food insecurity in our community, how do we make sure that our kids come to school prepared and ready to learn with a full stomach? And again, we have a lot of need in our community. We learned a lot about federal budgets and how we are reimbursed for school meals, and it's very complex. But the short story is, we're not being funded appropriately. It's hard to provide nutritious lunches and breakfasts with the funding that's available to us. So those were our three priorities. Director Borcheting is going to tell us a little bit about our meetings with those three individuals.
Thank you, President Garlock. I met with Representative Ashley Hinson once in person through my board seat on the Iowa Association of School Boards, and then CRCSD board members, myself, Directors Garlock, Humbles, and Roundtree met with her staff separately at another meeting. Representative Hinson and her staff were polite. When I met with Representative Hinson in person, she expressed no opportunity through her role on the Appropriations Committee to increase federal dollars in attempt to reach the 40% designated funding at the creation of the Individuals with Disabilities and Education Act. For reference, IDEA is one of the, is one use of specified federal dollars. Historically, only 10% to 14% has been designated towards this initiative, although 40% was promised at creation. CRCSD consistently runs between an $8 and $14 million deficit annually, and the majority of districts in the state also run an annual deficit for this initiative. Representative Hinson did, however, suggest CRCSD add another unfunded program that nobody at CRCSD, to my knowledge, has asked for. Representative Hinson has been invited to tour our district to witness the excellent programming we are currently offering, and learn more about plans to offer additional future programming. Joni Ernst was unable to meet with us in person. However, her staff indicated that Senator Ernst has an interest in learning more about school mental health supports, as she has supported mental health areas of focus in the past. The staff expressed an interest in staying in touch on the topic. Senator Charles Grassley and his staff expressed interest in learning more about food nutrition funding. They indicated there may be an opportunity to better fund school and student nutrition through a provision in the Agriculture Bill Senator Grassley plans to reintroduce. CRCSD is currently working toward gathering information, and will work with state agencies to provide more information as needed before re-engaging with Senator Grassley and his staff.
Thank you, Director Borcheting. So at the end of our meetings with all three of these offices, we did extend an invitation for them to come visit one of our schools at some point or another. We will follow up with all of them and extend that invitation again, as the second-largest school district in the state, and the largest school district in Congresswoman Hinson's district. I think they do have an interest in having that conversation with us. As Director Borcheting said, we did, we did feel encouraged by Senator Ernst's staff. They did show interest in mental health and how to be more supportive in that arena, and we will definitely be following up with Senator Grassley. We are in the process of collecting some information on school nutrition and funding for our own district, and trying to see if we can get some statewide data to help him as he writes that legislation in the farm bill. So it was, it was a lot to squeeze into two days. We all know that two days, it's not the beginning and the end. Advocacy is a continual process, and we, as board members, will stay in touch with these three offices and hope to see some change in some of the legislation. Slightly different topic, but the state legislature will be convening in January, and we will be involved in advocacy there as well on those state issues. Any questions from board members? Thank you. That is everything. Do we have a motion to adjourn for the evening?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. No further business. We stand adjourned at 6:26 PM. Thank you, everyone.